All right, welcome to this evening's, this afternoon's work session. We're gonna start off by asking if any commissioner would like to discuss any other preliminary items for the next BLC meeting. All right, here and done, we will go into our first work session. Discussion item will be communications policy. Ms. Valerie Fuller.
Good afternoon Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, make sure this works. Tonight I want to address some things I want to bring before the board so we can start talking about developing our communications policy. Specifically news release process, talking about the non-government entity requests that we receive, and the third piece of this would be our brand and logo use. So, what I'm looking for tonight is really direction from the Board of Commissioners about a communications policy, okay? So, the first piece of this is dealing with the media and news release process. So, the goal as it stands is, as communications administrator, to fill those media requests that we do get as they come in via phone call, via email, or to our various departments, to talk about how that will be processed through the communications office. As a communications administrator, if I'm not immediately available, who would be the designee or what designee would be appropriate? Part of that process is a news media inquiry form, such as the communications form, we have the news media inquiry form. That means that a media representative could actually submit a media inquiry through the news media inquiry form. We don't always get them that way. Sometimes we get them via phone calls, sometimes we get them via email, sometimes we get them through other department heads. The ultimate outcome would be that they be filled it through the communications administrator, through the office and/or designee, and that we will provide a response on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. One, so that we can consider, definitely consider the messaging and understand what the content is that we're providing to the media and that all Board of Commissioners will know what's happening. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about the current news release process. That basically consists of information coming from the Board of Commissioners or requests specifically coming from the Board of Commissioners, or from our department heads and/or designated staff in all the different departments. That typically consists of events, the activities, the different initiatives. Our Clayton County Board of Commissioners are very, very, very busy and people are taking notice, but we have a lot of events, a lot of activities, a lot of initiatives. That process works by first submitting a communications request form. Much like building and maintenance receive tickets, service desk receive tickets, we gotta be able to track the opening of events and activities, requests for videography, photography, setup for different events and activities. And so, we mind that process through the communications request form. Once we receive that request, that information is literally read, line by line. That is my instructions to the staff. Assume nothing. Read the communications request, look for what is being requested, and if there are any questions, that's the time to ask questions. No matter who it's coming from, whether it's from the Commissioner's office, if you don't understand something, ask them what they want, ask them what's needed, as well as the department heads and/or staff that's submitting. At that point, we're also checking for content, basically doesn't meet the intent and is it accurate. Sometimes we get a date, that's like July 11th on Tuesday night, but July 11th is really Monday. It happens, and so, we also are checking for AP format, which we will put the news release, if it's a news release, in AP format. We're also checking for grammar and punctuation. The Office of Communications then returns that draft to the Commissioner, constituent aide, or department head for approval. We don't send anything out without the submitter's approval. Once we get that approval, and specifically that's for flyers, news releases, individually or as a board, the OC submits the final draft to the Chief Operations Officer for final approval. Put a pin in that noting that for the BLC news releases, I never send out news releases without it going through the COO's office. At that point, once we get approval, the Office of Communications will then distribute through our communications channels. So, part of the communications that we also receive are non-routine communications requests. These are things that are, they vary. They can be from faith-based organizations, nonprofits, businesses, personal events and activities of people that they want us to promote, and so, I'm just making you aware that we do receive some of those too. Those are things that are not backed by, acknowledged, or have come through either one of you and/or any partnership with any department. The other piece to this is our brand and logo. We have received requests that come into us that do not, are not affiliated with one of the Commissioners, or the Chairman, or any department, but they're using our logo. So, that leads us to ask questions. One, we'll go back and try to see who the submitter is, where this information came from, or why they're actually trying to use the logo if it's not tied to one of the Commissioners or one of our department heads in partnership. So, one of the things we did note is that the Clayton County logos are for the sole use of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and its associated government divisions and partners, and authorized vendors, and we put that even in our brand booklet that's posted on the web that was approved previously. So, in reference to our news release process, we're really looking for a policy on non-government related organizations, too. The recommendation is that until parameters or criteria are outlined, that the distribution of communications and collateral will only include government and quasi-government related organizations, i.e. the water authority, school district, people we know, organizations that we work with every day, Clayton State University. In a legal review, and we're still processing this, but the recommendation for the non-routine communications would be that generally, in reference to our logo, it should not be used in association with any unsanctioned event. And if the logo or use of county endorsement is requested by a faith-based organization, nonprofit organization, business, or other entity, that the request must be received in writing, and approved in writing. Because otherwise, we have people out there using our logo, assuming that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners have approved it, and it has not been vetted through the Office of Communications or by this board. So, that in summary wraps up the overall process. I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, and I'll take any questions that you may have as we continue to review these processes and a possible policy.
Now, let me just ask that you present or provide us with a copy of the presentation you just gave as well.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
First, I want to say thank you so much. I, it brings me great joy when we have distinct policies that we can go by and procedures. So, really, really appreciative of this presentation. I want to make sure that we visit, revisit that portion that you stated about those that are non-government. And the reason I want to do that is because, as we know, we live in a very litigious society. And the first place I want to start is, we have thousands of businesses within the county. And this is something I've seen, and it's nothing against the business, I love the businesses, love Nuvo, but it's unfair when we see these non-governmental companies constantly being advertised, and then it actually is teetering upon, at that point, unless there's a specific event with a Commissioner, it's teetering upon the gratuity rule. Because we're not to give anything out, we're utilizing county property without it coming to the Board for approval, and there are many other restaurants that don't have that same opportunity. So, the government is actually, we're creating an unequal space for certain businesses where that's just not fair to other businesses. So, I'm glad you said that, because I've sent that to the Board in email before. The other concern I have is, we live and we're working among employees who some may or may not have gone through the EAP program for certain things. It has always concerned me when I see us advertising as a government about a happy hour or drinking. I could see if we're doing some type of fundraiser for something that maybe, that's a little bit on a different level, but just to be advertising, "We at the club tonight," I just think is inappropriate, and it puts us in a space of almost to where we're thinking about, "You're promoting this, we're promoting this as a board." When it goes out on our e-blast, on our information, then we are promoting it as a Board of Commissioners. And with that being stated, one of these employees go to one of those events, and they have a little bit too much to drink, we're putting ourselves in a very compromising situation. So, I want the Board to consider that. I would love for Mr. Reed to help us work through that, and I know a lot of it is just done in practice without, you know, really doing a bit deeper dive, but that's not something I feel comfortable with promoting among the employees. And then, the final thing I wanted to mention is, I'm glad you talked about the use of the logo, because we know that each individual Commissioner can partner on those things, but we also need to make sure that they're in line with our section code within our individual authority, which I think most of us generally do, but there are at times some things that you see the logo on that is really kind of questionable, again, like when you see it on a club, drinks, two-for-one drinks. I don't think that's just a good idea, at all. I don't think it's a good business practice.
Any other questions?
Um, let's send somebody else. The other thing I was hoping you would bring to us is employees' ability to speak to the media. Because I don't know any other company, and it's happened several times, that you could go out and speak to the media about your employers. I mean, I'm 1099, and let me go out and talk about MSI benefits, they're gonna relieve me from my duties. You, that's something we've got to put in our code. Employees represent, you have freedom of speech, but at the same token, they represent the Board of Commissioners, and so, we need to be mindful of that, particularly when we're speaking about things that aren't necessarily true. But when we were dealing with the $559,000, there was something stated about a clawback, that wasn't necessarily accurate. We need to be very careful of doing those types of things. And I think that's pretty much it that I was able to garner from the presentation, but I'm so glad you're going in this direction.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hey, good evening. I was gonna tell you too, Cobb County has a really good policy, if you want to look at that and kind of, because it touches the employees, it goes, it talks about when their, when an inquiry happens, and I know you've probably seen it or whatever, but it breaks it down. So, I think that would be good to look at as far as breaking it down from each section, like the purpose, the scope, what we believe, when an inquiry comes in-
Right.
-and what we, what we'll do with it. So, I just, I was just gonna say, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel-
Right.
-just kind of mimic it and add what we want to add in as Commissioners, and it has all of that in there about when employees should, employees should not directly contact the media without guidance from the communications department, things of that nature, so it is in there.
Absolutely. I've been in contact with several of the counties, spoke with Cobb again today.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna add that, you know, we appreciate you bringing this communications policy to us, or a recommendation for such, as we continue to fill that out and develop our own policy that is indicative as to how we govern here in Clayton County, because we don't have a policy for a lot of those issues that you spoke about-
Right.
-and we need to establish a policy so every Board member can be governed by such. So, we appreciate that.
One other point, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And I know the Board dealt with it in the past, but we also need to make sure we abide by, again, our section code. Anything that the Board of Commissioners has voted on, it should be the only communication that has the Board names on it. If it's coming from a specific Commissioner, they have the authority, if I'm not mistaken, based upon the section code, but it should not include the entire Board. I know that's something that previously we discussed, but again, it's kind of been here or there, hit or miss in practice, because what happened is, something will go out and it'll catch us by storm, because we didn't, it never came before the Board for approval or review. You know, we all have the right to state our opinions as Commissioners, but I just want to make sure that in your policy, and Mr. Reed, I know you all the way in the back, but based upon that code, it is very clear, what goes out from the Board are items that are voted on or sanctioned by the Board itself as a whole, a majority vote.
You have the comments or questions?
And we're gonna get that added, correct? And we'll bring it back.
Yes, I made that.
Yeah, she's gonna let us review the additions or whatever she develops as a, as a recommendation for this policy before we even vote on it, so-
Right.
Thank you so much.
This is just a start. So, thank you ma'am, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the expansion of the school leave policy, Human Resources Director, Ms. Pam Amos.
Good afternoon Chairman, Vice Chair Franklin, Commissioners Davis, Hambrik, and Dr. Anderson, and also, good afternoon to our Clayton County citizens. Thank you Sinclair. I have a very short presentation, I think it's about six or seven slides, so it won't take long. First of all, I want to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to present this afternoon, and the topic that I'm presenting on is our school leave policy. Human Resources, we are requesting to expand that policy, and before I go any further, let me say that Mr. Ryan Shaw, Human Resources Officer, is here. Ryan is over employee relations, and this is a part of that. So, Resolution 99-137 was a collaborative effort between former Sheriff Stanley Tuggle and Commissioner Charlie Griswell. Resolution 99-137 established a school leave policy effective 11/16/1999. I had been employed with the county for about two months when this policy became, became effective at the Police Department, and I can tell you, there was a lot of discussion and conversations around this policy. The purpose is to provide leave to parents to attend their children's school functions. Resolution 99-137 provides eight hours of leave per calendar year. The eligibility is parents, legal guardians, stepparents, grandparents, or step-grandparents. The other eligibility criterion is that the child must be enrolled in Clayton County school system. Human Resources is requesting to expand the school leave policy. We are requesting to maintain the individuals that I just spoke of who can participate, but we are requesting to expand it to include all school systems from various locales as identified by our employee's address on file. To sum that up, we are requesting that this particular benefit be extended to all Clayton County full-time employees. We do believe that back in 1999, that Sheriff Tuggle, as well as Commissioner Griswell, laid a great foundation on which we can build to expand. When you take a look at the different societal factors and economic factors that we are looking at today, every little thing that we can do to help the employees is greatly appreciated. You have disruption to the family unit, you have death and divorce. I was a very young widow with two children when my first husband passed away. You have two parent, what I call two job parents, where you have parents who are working two, sometimes three jobs, just to keep up. So, anything that, once again, that can be helpful to the employees is what we're focusing on in employee relations. The pillars that this impact as far as Clayton County strategic plan is governance, quality of life, and fiscal responsibility, and I'll say where I say, I'll explain later why I said fiscal responsibility. There is another thing, as the HR Director, that concerns me about this particular policy is disparate impact. Disparate impact occurs when there is a policy or a practice that unintentionally provides more benefits for one segment of the population than it does the other. Gregg versus Duke Powell is a landmark case that expand, that established disparate treatment. You have disparate intact, intent in which you are, you know, consciously discriminating. You do have bona fide occupational qualifiers, which allows us to legally discriminate in some cases, but race is never a BFOQ. Back in 99, Clayton County population then and now, when I came to work for the county in 1999, Clayton County's population was majority Caucasian. Current Clayton County population is majority African-American. A majority, the majority of our employees live in Clayton County. I have about five employees who live in the same district that I live in, District 3. So, when you look at our employees and the makeup, it, in my mind, it was, it could have been an issue then, but it's definitely a concern of mine as the HR Director regarding the disparate impact. And if an employee were to bring that forth as the HR Director, I would have a hard time explaining it. In summary, we are requesting to extend the current school leave policy, two main considerations, the legal concern that I just brought forth, as well as giving an intangible benefit to our employees that can definitely help with retention and recruitment. Our stay interviews and we'll be presenting the results to, of that to you all soon, but it consistently show, the interviews consistently show that our employees take pride in serving their community, and this is a way to give back. Once again, a great foundation on which to expand. Budgetary impact on the, in my mind, and it may be a little bit more to the, to it Stacy, when you're talking about the budgetary impact, but in my mind, the compensation is already budgeted, and I'm not asking the Board to do anything that we're not currently doing, we're just trying to expand it to more employees. Since the employee's compensation is already budgeted, this request adds no additional compensation. There could be an indirect impact if employees not here, they can't be productive, however, that department head has the discretion to approve it or not based on the business necessity of his or her department at that particular time. And I told you it would be short and sweet, and that's basically it.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Let me just ask this, because I'm a little bit confused. The policy right now states that an employee has eight hours to go to his or her daughter's or son's school outside, anywhere in the, in the, not in the county, but within the region, or wherever the kids go to school, wherever they live at.
The current-
Or is it in the county only?
I apologize Chairman, for cutting you off sir, it's in the county. The child has to be enrolled in Clayton County school.
And this expansion requests to go outside of the county.
Is to go outside of the county, yes sir.
All right, any other questions?
Um, yes, I'm thinking, is it Clayton, I mean, is it the county or the state that has an eight-hour leave-
That's awesome.
-that you, personal leave, that you can do whatever? Is that, is that the county?
I'm not familiar with one with the state, Commissioner Hambrik, but I do-
Is it with the county?
Ma'am.
Is it with the county? I'm confused.
What we, what we have, I'm sorry, what we have with the county is a floating holiday.
Okay.
They got eight hours to do whatever they want to.
So, will this take the place of that, or would that be inclusive?
Yes ma'am, it would be in addition to.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Well-
Commissioner Franklin.
I think it's great intent, but you lost me when you brought up the discrimination case, because trying to figure that part out as I'm reading this, that's number one.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we're gonna base it upon this, then what we're asking actually further causes employment discrimination, because then you're going with a child. There are some people who don't even like children, and so, then they can't get their eight hours. I think the best way, if your intent is to make sure we're not discriminatory against hours or leave, I gotta lean towards Commissioner Hambrik, and really, it just needs to be an eight-hour floating holiday that they have.
Well, as I stated before, this policy has been in place since I've been employed with Clayton County in 99. So, it, what, what we're doing in order to try to expand it to everybody, that's what we're trying to do. Now, it is understood, because that was one of the discussions that we had at the Police Department when I was there, some of the employees were up in arms because they say, "I have no children." But it's not for the ones who have, who have children. The policy is for school leave for grandparents, parents, legal guardians who have children. So, if we're, if we are looking at it from the scope of children, then it, it kind of begs to differ, I don't understand how that could be discriminatory against a person who does not have children.
It is, it'll be our decision to make, but I'm gonna be honest with you, because it's been there so long, and the people that you even called, it begs for us to go back and look at it. So, it doesn't mean we need to expound on something, because that, if you're basing what you're presenting to us on this case that I'm sitting here reading, and then we're further putting ourselves in that hole, so it'll be a board decision.
Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to make that point, that it doesn't fit within the category of, I guess, erasing or allowing us to comply with that case that you just cited, without providing any additional information other than citing the case.
This disparate impact occurs when you have a policy or a practice in place that impacts one population, employee population, more so than it does another. So, my argument, and first of all, it's not the legal issue that I'm concerned about, I'm, like you, I'm fighting for the employees of Clayton County. So, we have a, we have a policy, and I'm just, I'll just put it out here since we're on record, we do have a policy where you have African-American employees who have this policy, who have the benefit of this eight-hour school leave, more so than we do Caucasian employees. In 1999, it was, it was flipped. So, I can easily see as the HR Director, how a claim can be made against that. Now, it would be up to us to defend it, and what I'm saying is, I don't have a, I wouldn't know how to defend that if that particular claim was made. Disparate impact is what it is, you can, you have a policy or a practice that favors one set more so than the other, that's disparate impact in a nutshell.
Yeah, as the Commissioner said, when you're looking at it from that perspective, because demographics have changed-
That's right, it has.
-and there's more Caucasians that live outside of the county, your request for expansion is simply giving everybody the same opportunity-
The same opportunity.
-to be able to attend their kid's school, but at the end of the day, yes, it will be a decision that's made by the Board.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Amos?
And Chairman, I want to say to the Board too, that there are a lot of different policies that are outdated, like the one that we're talking about salary in lieu of comp. There is a lot of different policies that we have, and as HR, one of the things that I'm trying to do before retirement, which is still a few years away, is we are in the process of creating our comprehensive SOP for the entire department, and as we go through that process, we have noticed some inefficiencies, we've made some changes, that we can do things better, and part of that is looking at these different policies to see how we can make them better. So, this won't be the last time I come before the Board with this type of request, and as Commissioner said, it's up to the Board to either, you know, vote it up or down.
Last question.
Yes sir.
Have you looked at any other county who has a similar policy?
No sir, I have not, but we can, we can take a look at it.
Take a look and see who else may be, have developed a policy in the same area, and what problems or issues they may have had with it, and the benefits thereof as well.
Most certainly will.
And Mr. Chairman-
Commissioner Anderson.
I want to say also, within the school district, we were allowed to leave when we had issues, where we had things to do with our kids as well, so it may be a policy on the school district side that you can look at, but we were, you know, for certain things that our kids were having, you know, dances, things like that, graduation, we were able to take that leave and not be dapped for, so kind of see what the policy looks like on that side, because it's a great policy, it, you know, then the tensions are great, especially for parents who want to go see their children graduate, who want to go to their kids' award ceremonies and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
So, to, you know, so just kind of look at that, and then we can go from there.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna propose to the, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
If the, if the goal is what was set to us, or as it was described, I think we need to consider another- I think we need to consider another eight-hour floating holiday for all employees. I am a mother of four, and I have several adopted kids, but at the same token, I still stand by, even though the intent i- is definitely to be, you know, thanked or commended, but just as this presentation states, and as one that's now in my twentieth year of an industry that does allow certain types of discrimination based upon age, this does not, this is not meeting our goals. It's gonna further create separation. Even the way it was presented, it's gonna further create issues. So if this is something we're wanting to fix, then I would hope the board considers the eight-hour floating holiday, increasing that, and just making it a generalization. And so then the employees know they can use it for those various things. So then it's their option, it's their choice. And it won't be as costly to us to give them an extra eight-hour floating holiday, because there's gonna be that woman out there that, number one, does not have an opportunity of grandkids, couldn't have children, or that father, I want to discriminate against men.
Understood.
And I, just because something's been done in the past in practice, doesn't make it right.
Absolutely.
So if we want to make sure that we're providing an opportunity, there's a better way to do it and not continue to further put us in a space of any type of disparate practices, and that's just all I have to say.
And I appreciate that, because at least it started the, the conversation of the concerns that we do have.
Yeah, and yet, do you have something, Commissioner?
Well, after we finish this conversation, but it's pertaining to.
And that's an excellent point that Commissioner Franklin just mentioned. And also, that hopefully will be fleshed, flushed out when you get some other examples from what other counties and, and school systems and districts are doing as well. But thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome, Chairman.
Commissioner Davis.
One point, if we just change the name of the personal leave time.
Right.
Doesn't that pretty much solve?
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
Instead of a holiday, just a personal leave.
Absolutely.
Or just, or just do the eight hours of personal leave, use it the way you want to use it. But again, that's something that we would have to, we'll vote on if, once we get the additional information.
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Oh, you had a nice jacket on, too, by the way. But I wanted to say, when I was talking about, I work in the insurance industry. Let me be clear, I was looking at you talking, you shop talk, and I don't want it to be taken out of context. Because that was what you were mentioning about insurance legally discriminates against age and all that kind of stuff, so.
I got you, Commissioner.
Bring clarity to y'all.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner.
Yes, a couple months ago, we were presented with a presentation from one of the school board members regarding employees and reading and taking time off.
Yes, ma'am.
Working with the public school. Have we gotten any further with that? Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just, I told the board to just beware, because when it comes to the employees of Clayton County, I will stand up and I'll do everything that I can. So yes, ma'am, Ms. Rice is the one who provided that presentation. And I believe we already have that on the agenda to bring it back before the board. So we have several things. I just didn't want to bombard the board with all, all the things that we have at once. And I know that change is not easy, and I know when I come in before you all with changes, that, you know, you have to be prepared to reconsider and, and to stand up for what you believe. But yes, there's a lot more that we have coming for the board. But of course, it's the board's discretion. I can't get anything done without you all's approval, and I appreciate that.
And that could be contained in the floating holiday, too, so we don't have to get down in the weeds, because the school system does not offer that to their own employees, but that could be a reason.
You're wel, you're welcome, Chairman.
All right, next presentation is the Human Resources Collaboration with Benefits Broker, and then A.
Once again, I thank the board for your support and for giving us the opportunity to present. In collaboration with Commissioner Davis, this year, we implemented quarterly benefit updates to the board. This is the second one. We don't want you to hear from us only at renewal time, because that is not fair. And we bring a lot of information to you all at renewal. So this is just our way of keeping the communication open with the board throughout the year regarding our benefits. Human Resources is working with our employees to instill a culture of wellness. Wellness has many benefits, including quality of life for employees and lower cost for Clayton County. Our past and upcoming wellness initiatives reflects Clayton County commitment to our employees' health. And it's not just about benefits anymore. Wellness has taken a very firm place in overall well-being. Our March partners will present a premium deferential model that will promote wellness among our employees. We did have a model in place that was suspended, and now we are asking the board for your consideration to, to bring it back. So with that being said, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Jack Thompson and Ms. Maureen Rosen.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Chairman Turner, Vice Chair Franklin, Dr. Anderson, Commissioners Davis and Hamburg, we're privileged to be here. This is, as Director Ample said, the second quarterly presentation that we've made. We welcome this opportunity to visit with you, to share progress that we've made throughout the year. You may be aware that in, in April of twenty twenty-two, we launched the first wellness program through a vendor called Sonic Boom. And the idea was to have a wellness plan that stood on its own, that we would not rely upon any particular medical carrier, but yet you would have your own unique wellness plan that would interact with the medical carriers. So that if you had to replace a medical carrier in the future, you would unplug that medical carrier and you would replace it with a new one. So there was a lot of intention around this, to have your own unique standalone wellness plan. Nothing's perfect. Rome is not built in a day, but we feel like we're making progress along the way. And so this presentation is the second installment in this wellness plan. We want your employees and their covered spouses to be more engaged in the wellness plan. And how best do you do that? Generally, you incent them financially. So we're gonna talk about this plan. It's a optional plan. You're not required to participate, but if you do, you'll see in just a moment the, the benefits of doing so. So we first want to talk about the plan purpose. And then, secondly, the structure, how it'll work, what the costs are gonna be, and then what the, the benefits are going to be as well. I think there's a total of eight slides here, so very brief. Please stop us along the way if you have questions. So the wellness plan purpose, very simply, we want to encourage your employees and their dependent spouses who are insured under either of your commercial medical insurance plans, either with Anthem or with Kaiser, to take advantage of the preventative care services under these plans. There's no cost share, because under the Affordable Care Act, your well-woman or well-man exams must be provided for no charge. So you pay approximately twenty-five million dollars a year for your two commercial health insurance plans. We feel like it's a reasonable request for your employees and for those covered spouses to simply go to their doctor and to have an annual well-woman or well-man exam and have their biometric screenings done. Where sure, research shows that preventative care services can save lives and improve health by identifying illnesses early in their stage, managing them more effectively, and treating them before they develop into more complicated debilitating conditions, and that some services often cost more if left untreated. A former neighbor of mine did not have his colonoscopy done three years ago, right in the middle of COVID. We came out of COVID, he was not feeling well. He went to the doctor, stage four colon cancer. Unfortunately, he passed away not too long ago. I think we all know stories, knowing people are stories like that. So the whole idea here is that we feel like it's reasonable for you to ask your employees and their dependents, encourage them to have their annual physical exams done and their biometric screenings. So what are the requirements to qualify? This is a premium discount. This is a reward, if you think of it in those terms. You have to be an active employee, covered by either the Anthem or the Kaiser Commercial Medical Insurance. And if you're covering a spouse, your spouse is also considered a participant under the premium discount plan. And those employees and their covered spouses must complete a primary care physician office visit with preventative care screenings recommended by their doctor. We were very careful to not dictate to anyone what those screenings are, because they differ depending on your age, under the American Medical Association guidelines, and also on your gender as well. We simply want your employees and their covered spouses to go see their primary care doctor of their choosing and have the biometric screenings performed that are recommended by that doctor. This was a particular point of discussion. We wanted to make sure that we gave all of your employees and their covered spouses plenty of time to fulfill this requirement. So we would look back or look over a twelve-month period of time, and we would go back to April of this year through March thirty-first of next year. And they would have that full twelve-month period in order to complete that requirement. The premium discount is proposed to start on May first of twenty twenty-four, and it would remain in, in effect through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So there would be eight months in the first plan year of this program. Active employees and their covered spouses who do not meet the requirement by March thirty-first will continue the same premium via payroll deductions from May first of next year, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first. So if they complete them, you get the discount. If you don't, you pay the same rate. New hires are grandfathered for the first six months, and they receive the discount for the current plan year, but they have to earn it for the next plan year. So for example, if you hired somebody in the first six months of twenty twenty-four, they would get the discount, and they would keep it for that through the end of twenty twenty-four, but they'd have to get their biometric screenings done, their, their annual well-woman or well-man exam and their biometric screenings done to carry it into twenty twenty-five. The discount is twenty-five dollars per paycheck for fifty dollars a month, and it's six hundred dollars annually. Again, it's prorated for the first year. The method of tracking the completion, our team, Maureen Rosen specifically, has been working with Sonic Boom and with Kaiser and with Anthem to get them to report the data to Sonic Boom. So they have been providing, and we have been tracking preventative care screenings for their, your employees and their dependents, their dependent spouse, to be specific. Employees and their spouses, again, are required by Kaiser to log into the Kaiser mobile app or the web portal and authorize the release of the, the release of the data. We pleaded quite a bit with them. They were very insistent because of PHI, Protected Health Information. Anthem will release it directly to Sonic Boom without authorization. We have education and communication campaigns planned and, that are currently underway regarding the authorization for Kaiser to release this data. That kicked off at the end of June, and Sonic Boom will be providing reporting to the county's HR department regarding the employees and their spouses that have completed these wellness exam requirements and screenings with their primary care doctor. We cut that off at the end of March of next year to give us a month to clean up the records so that the payroll deductions are appropriately loaded into the system. So what does this cost? Because there is an expense. When you give a discount and premium, there's a cost associated with this. It depends on the participation level. In the conversations that we had with your HR department, we asked a lot of questions about how this was done previously, and that it was ended about three years ago. And three years ago, your participation level was seventy-five percent. That's very high. I mean, that's encouraging. That gets people's participation and attention. And if we had seventy-five percent of your population that were having their preventative care screenings done every year, we think that's gonna save the county some money. So in the best-case scenario, based on your past programs, the seventy-five percent annually would cost eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars in premium discounts. However, we would prorate that for the twenty twenty-four calendar year, so it would be about five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. If participation was lower, at sixty-five percent, the annual cost is seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Again, prorated for the first year, eight months, it's five-hundred-and-three thousand. If we only got half of your employees to participate, five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-three-eighty-four is the prorated amount. We ask MMA Actuarial, do you have statistics that you could provide that would show what the savings would be, that would help us better quantify? If the county's gonna make that investment in their employees to go get their annual physicals and biometric screenings done, how much money are we gonna save? It's a very difficult question. They did not, are not able to give us a pinpoint answer. But the common thought process is, if we avoid a couple of hospitalizations, we're gonna make up that money. So that's the idea. It's an investment in your employees, but it also fulfills several key initiatives that you've already stated that are important to you. Before we move on, I'm gonna pause here and see what questions, comments, or thoughts you may have about the premium discount program, how it's designed, or that we're proposing it, or anything else that we've discussed thus far.
Any questions to this floor? Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I do have one, which is, how does this differ from just your normal annual physical?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
Does it?
No, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, it's not a question of you, but of HR. Is this a similar wellness plan that we have already, or is it totally different?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Hamburg.
Please take the podium, Ms. Anderson.
Excuse me, Janet.
If you can recall, years ago, we had the biometrics in place, where you had to go out to what was known as the beach back then and get your screening. So when I became director, it seemed like the structure of it needed some work. We needed to go back and review it. So we've gone back and reviewed it, and that's what this is about today. It'll be, in a sense, bringing back the biometrics.
No, no, we get a wellness email from time to time.
Yes, ma'am.
About, so what is that, how does that differ from what we are doing now?
And thank you so much, Commissioner, because Edward Lance is our wellness coordinator, and he's doing an awesome job within, within our employee population, as well as our citizens. Because we were getting ready to have another domestic violence workshop for teens coming up, and we will be offering that to our citizens if they. and we will be offering that to our citizens if they wanted to come and, uh, participate in that workshop. So yes, ma'am, this is something that is totally different. We have a lot of different wellness initiatives that are going on. Um, we have, within our employee population based on the data, we know that we have a high rate of pre-diabetes, we have a high rate of cancer, and there's other issues that we have going on in the population. What you're going to see coming up soon is wellness initiative focused directly on those particular things. But yes, ma'am, this is something different.
Okay, well, I think this will be good. It should help with the participation in what we are being presented, uh, this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
And also.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, and one other point of clarification, if I may. Those wellness initiatives that have already started are going to continue. So this is another layer of wellness. We feel like we've got our sea legs under us and we're, and, and to, to Director Amble's point, uh, Edward Lance is doing a great job. So we feel like we're, we're walking now and, and we're shifting gears and we're putting something else into the plan to encourage your employees. And, uh, Commissioner Davis, you're exactly right about what's different about what we're already doing, nothing. We just want everybody to get, uh, their annual physical and have their biometric screenings done because it's free, it's, it's part of the plan. And now we're incenting them to go do that.
And it seems like we get a little compensation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, not only that, but I'm definitely proud of our employees who are engaged in the wellness program because every day as I come in, I almost run over several of them because they're always walking around the building trying to get their steps in. But they are definitely, uh, engaged in the wellness program.
Those are wellness champions and people that we like to help us because without them, it's much, much more challenging.
And if I may, sir, just I wanted to add one point of clarification.
Maureen Rosen.
Give us your name again, for the record, your name.
Sorry, Maureen Rosen, thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, I just wanted to add one more point of clarification. So you heard us mention the portal, which is your wellness portal that is called Sonic Boom. So that portal does allow your employees to earn incentives, cash rewards, gift cards, a variety. They can go shopping in the mall, they can pick out any type of reward that they wish based on their point value. But that takes signing into the portal and then getting your points just from doing activities. They don't even know that they have credit for it if they don't log in. But if they do log in, they might be surprised because they did get a physical, they got points for that, they have money to spend. They might have gotten a dental cleaning, they'll get points for that, vision exams. And many of the other things they do are already being tracked and prizes are awarded. But this is something that is more of the financial incentive for those people that don't even want to go out to the portal. They may not be the type of person that wants to look in a portal and see what kind of activities they can complete, classes they can do. They just want the financial incentive for doing what they're doing already or incent them financially for doing something. So it's one of those, something for everybody will reward you and go out shopping because that's what some people enjoy. They like the competitive nature of the many challenges that are out there. They want to be the superstar and do their steps and things and they'll continue to get those points and enjoy the prizes that come with it.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to share that, the portal's still there, still working.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you so much.
So what are the benefits of doing this program? Uh, to the county, it promotes and endorses a message behind the county's mission and vision statement. The mission statement being to establish a culture of well-being for our employees and their families by implementing educational and motivational programs, strategies and initiatives to mo- promote, uh, quality of life. Um, it's very important for parents, being the head of household, to, to do the well, uh, woman and well-man exams because if that parent's health fails, the rest of the family suffers. And so, um, we feel like this premium discount plan fits very nicely with your stated mission statement. And then the vision is to establish a, a wellness and health program that will become a model program beyond Clayton County. And we very much want to make this a model so that when other, uh, counties and organizations look, this is a leader, an industry leader. Early detection leads to better outcomes, leading to lower plan costs, although difficult to quantify. We feel like if we can get people in to see their primary care doctor, um, it, it will help to lower costs to prevent, um, large claims from occurring. And then benefits to the employees, ideally, the office visit with their primary care physician will close gaps in care. If they're diabetic, uh, they're, they're seeking care regarding their diabetes. If they're hypertensive, if they have high cholesterol. I mean, we look at your claims data rather intently and these are the things that we're seeing. And so we hope that we close those gaps in care, that they're adherent to what, uh, their doctor is recommending. Um, we get the covered members on the road to better health and engage employees and spouses without a primary care relationship to start one. I had a client, have a client, long-term client, uh, who retired not too long ago. His son took over the business. He and his wife, uh, retired, a future was so bright, they had to wear shades. She dropped dead of a heart attack last Monday. And I'm like, oh my gosh, I mean, could, had, had, did you not see your doctor? Did you not have any idea that there were issues there? Not that I would ever ask, but I just, I, I thought about this, it's bothered me a lot. So for those employees and their spouses who are covered, that don't have a primary care relationship, we want them to start one. Uh, and it, they don't have to, they're not forced to. We're incenting them financially to do so. Uh, knowing and understanding your numbers, uh, is powerful. And, and we would hope if you go see your doctor and they say your cholesterol's elevated or you have high blood pressure or whatever the condition is, that you would feel compelled to do something about it. And just getting on a little bit of medication, high blood pressure, cholesterol, et cetera, uh, can help immensely. And, um, of course, we might pick up some rather significant medical conditions. Um, I think that's the presentation, so, um, any thoughts or questions, uh, in addition to that?
All right, and we definitely appreciate the presentation because we all know that a healthy employee is a productive employee because they actually show up for work, right? Is there any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much for your presentation, sir, and continue to do the good work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Chairman, I want to also, uh, let the board know that Ms. Toni Morrison, she is the Assistant Director of, um, Assistant Director of, she's the Assistant Manager of the Office Administration. Ms. Angela Wood, of course, is the manager and she's, uh, we all need to pay you today.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. All right, with there being no other business for this board, we stand adjourned.